I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission of October 12th, 2016. A printed agenda is available outside the hearing room and a copy of the full agenda, including staff reports, is available at the front of the chambers with the clerk. Open Meetings Act is posted just inside the doors at the back of the room. Please note if you are here to testify on the applications on the proposed Costco development, the applicant at the request of the neighborhood has requested a four-week deferral of the public hearing and action on these items to the, have been delayed to the November 9th, 2016 meeting. If you want to testify today, you will be given an opportunity to do so. If you parked in the parking garage across the street to the north, please be sure to pick up a parking coupon on your way out for free parking. David's got them right there. Out of courtesy for those attending this meeting, commissioners and staff, cellular phone usage is not permitted in these chambers during any portion of this meeting. We appreciate your cooperation. Planning Commission action today is final on item 4.2C, Use Permit #16009. Any aggrieved person may appeal final action to the Planning Commission to the City Council by filing a notice of appeal with the clerk within 14 days following the action of the Planning Commission. Planning Commission action on all other items is a recommendation to the City Council or the County Board. First item of business is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held September 28th, 2016. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Sunderman?
Second.
Harris? Thank you. Jerry, please call the vote.
Core?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Lust?
Epstein.
Sunderman?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Hove?
Epstein.
Motion carried with two abstentions and, I'm sorry, carried five to zero with two abstentions.
The next item of business is the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda will be called at the same time and will not be scheduled for a separate public hearing unless there is a request from someone wishing to speak or at the request of a commission member. I'll ask Jerry to read all the consent agenda items into the record. Once those items are read, she will ask if there is anyone wishing to speak. If you wish to speak on an item on the consent agenda, we ask that you stand and state that item. That item will then be removed from the consent agenda and scheduled as a separate public hearing under Section 3 of today's agenda. All items remaining on the consent agenda will be voted upon in total with a motion for approval. Jerry, please call the items on the consent agenda.
Okay, please note that Commissioner Shear has declared a conflict of interest on all consent agenda items today and therefore will not be voting on those items. Okay, first item is item 1.1, text amendment #16009, amending Chapter 27.69 of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to signs by amending Section 27.69.090 to amend the exception allowing the permitted wall sign on the building facade of places of religious assembly, schools, and community playhouses to be increased from a maximum of 20 square feet from any street front, or 20 square feet area to 100 square feet in area if such use is located a minimum of 200 feet from any street frontage and is located in an AG or AGR district to provide that when such use is located a minimum of 100 feet from any street frontage, the permitted wall sign shall be a maximum of 50 square feet in area in repealing Section 27.69.090 as hitherto existing. The next item, three items are related. Item 1.2, Change of Zone #16029 from R2 to RT. Item 1.2B is Use Permit #16008 to allow for the construction of an office in an RT residential transition district with waivers to RT District Parking Lot setbacks and sign location. And the third item, associated item, is item 1.2C, Street and Alley Vacation 16004 to vacate a portion of the North 46th Street public right-of-way between the South right-of-way line of Orchard Street and the North right-of-way line of Y Street, all generally located at 46th and Orchard Streets. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed on these consent agenda items?
I see none.
Is there anyone here wishing to speak on any of these consent agenda items? If so, please stand and state that item.
Take a motion?
Move.
Approval, Lust.
Second.
Core.
Thank you. Jerry, please call the vote.
Core?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Lust?
Yes.
Sunderman?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Hove?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Six to zero, I'm sorry.
I'll now ask Jerry to call any requests for deferral received prior to this meeting.
Okay, we've received two written requests for deferral from the respective applicants. The first is a two-week deferral on item 2.1, Change of Zone #16023 from AG Agricultural District to H3 Highway Commercial District on approximately 2.62 acres more or less on property generally located at 6625 Northwest 48th Street. This would defer this item until the October 26th meeting. The second request is for a four-week deferral to the November 9th meeting on the three associated applications for the Costco development, including item 4.2A Comprehensive Plan Amendment #16004 to revise the future land use map in the 2040 Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan from public and semi-public and residential urban density designations to commercial designation on approximately 34.38 acres more or less. Item 4.2B is Change of Zone #16030 from AG Agricultural District to B2 Planned Neighborhood Business District, from AG Agricultural District to R1 Residential District, and from R1 Residential District to B2 Planned Neighborhood Business District. And the third item is item 4.2C, Use Permit #16009 to allow up to 177,000 square feet of new commercial floor area, including a resident, or retail warehouse and motorized vehicle fuel facility, all located on property generally located at a northeast corner of South 14th and Pine Lake Road.
I would entertain a motion on the request for deferral.
Move deferral, Core.
Second.
Harris.
Thank you. Jerry, please call the vote.
Core?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Lust?
Yes.
Sunderman?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Hove?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Is there anyone here wishing to speak on the Change of Zone #16023 today rather than waiting until October 26th? I see none. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on the Costco-related agenda items, Comprehensive Plan Amendment 16004, Change of Zone 16030, or Use Permit 16009 today rather than waiting until the November 9th meeting? I see none. We will proceed to the public hearings. The staff will make a brief presentation. The applicant will then be requested to present his or her testimony, followed by those who wish to testify in support, followed by those who wish to testify in opposition. The staff will then be given an opportunity to respond to the testimony and then the applicant shall have an opportunity for rebuttal. Each person testifying should state their name and address and shall have five minutes to speak unless additional time is requested and granted. The timer will go off after four minutes, then you'll have one minute to wrap up your testimony. The Planning Commission will vote immediately at the close of the public hearing unless the commission votes to defer action or continue the public hearing. Please note that in order to move items forward to the City Council or County Board for consideration, there must be a five affirmative votes of the commission on the main motion. Jerry, please call the first public hearing item.
Okay. Under public hearing and administrative action, item 4.1, Comprehensive Plan Conformance #16008 to review the proposed Lancaster County Road and Bridge Construction Program fiscal year 2017 and 2018 to 2022 as to conformance with the 2040 Lincoln Lancaster County Plan. Staff recommendation is for conformance with the comprehensive plan. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed on this agenda item?
I see none. Mike?
I'm Mike Breenzo with the Lincoln Lancaster Planning Department. And I'm the staff that did the review on the, this year's county 1 and 6. What we're asking of the Planning Commission is for a review of conformity with the current 2040 Comprehensive Plan. As you know, we're in the process of updating the Comprehensive Plan. This is still a review of the current plan. The county 1 and 6 is under review for conformity and your recommendations will be forwarded to the county board for their public hearing scheduled November 1st. Your comments that go with that recommendation can include more items than review of conformity, but your task today is for that review. Any additional comments in terms of scope, funding, priorities, they will be forwarded along as well, but that is not part of the official action of your finding. As you know, the current county plan does not have specific priorities. It does have projects that are considered programmed and those that are potential. Conformity is focused on the program projects. As you are aware, that there's extensive road network in the county, over 40 miles of roads, and the county tends to be able to pave one to two miles a year, so it takes a while to get through that. We're focused on the next six years or the one and six-year program. And Pam Dingman's here, she has some words for you as well, but any questions at this time?
Any questions for Mike? Thank you.
When technology works, we should always have a brief moment of rejoicing. Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer, 444 Cherry Creek Drive. And tonight, this afternoon, I'm here to talk to you about this year's proposed 1 and 6 roadway plan. Kind of approached the plan a little different this year. Last year during the public hearing, there were a lot of people who wanted to have a dialogue. And as you're aware, public hearings are really not a place for dialogue, although the public often likes to have a dialogue with us. So this year, prior to meeting with you, I went out into the county, into the four quadrants, and held public meetings so that I can have a dialogue with the public to talk to them about what they feel their needs are in regards to our roads and bridges. And I was a little nervous at just kind of laying that out there for open dialogue, but all of those meetings went very well and I think everyone, I learned some things about the areas that I do engineering in and I think the public learned a lot of things about our constraints with roads and bridges and our plan. So with that, I've already introduced myself as Pam Dingman. I did put my contact information up here because anyone who has additional questions after this meeting is welcome to call me and discuss any issues with me. And I kind of with that, would like to go right into what we were able to complete in 2016. So if it can stop raining in the next few days, we have completed Old Chaney. And so Old Chaney had the highest traffic count on it in the county of any unpaved road at just a little under 500 cars a day. We really know that our gravel roads start to break down at about 300 cars a day and become very difficult to maintain. So I was out this week in the rain and did drive the section of asphalt from the previous edge of asphalt to the county line. It's an awesome, awesome, really scenic drive if you have a chance to get down there. We have graded Denton Road, in fact, we have graded Denton Road and prepped for paving at least three times now and been rained out every time, but if we can just get three days, three dry days, Denton Road will be paved as well as Bluff Road, which is actually scheduled to start on Saturday of this week. In addition to that, though, we've completed a number of overlays that were included in your packet, and Bridge X 205 is scheduled to be opened on November 1st. And you may note that Bridge X 205 is the first bridge that my department has been able to build in three years. And so it's a significant goal for us to complete this one bridge. It did come in a little over $1 million for construction, but it was previously one of the very bad bridges in Lancaster County. Some of the things that caused my program to have a lot of grief last year was, one of the big things was the flooding of 2015. And as you may be aware, there are no contingency funds in Lancaster County for a disaster event like this. So I was really faced with reducing, I had to drop a grading project because I had to make room for our emergency projects and I had to reduce our overall asphalt program for last year. So just so you can have a picture of what that really meant to the budget, road debris. So we had to remove over 3,000 tons of road debris from our county roads, mostly cornstalks and trees. We were really rich in cornstalks for a while there. In fact, at one point, we had to get our snowplows out to push them off the road because in some areas, in particular, south of Wilderness Park, we had more than four feet of cornstalks on the road. Debris removal alone cost Lancaster County over $800,000 last year, and I think it was important that we get that cleaned up for the safety and health of the public. But in addition to that, we had, we lost roadway in hundreds of locations on the south part of the county that night. And roadway reconstruction to get those roads back open, whether it be pipe replacement or we did have to do some asphalt replacement or gravel and rock replacement, cost the county about $580,000. And then, of course, came the 2.6 million dollars in bridge damage. So I'm really proud to say that we have cleaned up the debris, we've repaired all of the roads, and 11 of those 13 bridges have either been repaired or under contract to be repaired prior to November 1st. And just so you get a little bit of an idea of the devastation, this is Bridge H 207. It's the last major crossing of the Salt Creek. I'll humbly tell you that I believe this bridge came within hours of being lost. Had that creek stayed full for another four to six hours, I think we would have had a lot more serious questions to ask ourselves. In fact, the power pole that you may notice by the bridge abutment has now been moved back the embankment twice in order to keep power to this area. You don't necessarily realize how big and how deep this is until you see the backhoe off the bridge down the embankment repairing it, and you know, everyone has a kind of an order of magnitude of scale. Again, in the picture on the top left, you can see the backhoe underneath the bridge repairing the embankment, and then the bottom left, or the bottom right, you can see that repaired embankment. We did use over 1,500 tons of large riprap to repair this. Why is that significant? That was all the riprap Martin Marietta had on hand, this size. So we had to wait to repair some of our other bridges until they had actually mined the riprap so that we could finish some of our other construction projects. Just kind of order of magnitude so you can get what really happened that night. That flood was really concentrated in the southwest quadrant of the county, and then as it flowed through the city, it flowed out the Waverly area. And so what you're seeing in blue on this map, and this is the north half of the county, are projects that we did associated with the flood that we had to add to our program this year. What you're seeing in purple and red are new paving projects. And so while we were up overlaying Agnew Road, we did overlay through unincorporate, the unincorporated village of Agnew. They had been promised paving for over 40 years, so they didn't really believe we were going to do it until we were there, but I believe it's been significant to that small community. And then we did work with Waverly to pave Bluff Road from the edge of pavement on 148th Street to the interstate via Doug. But when you look at the south end of the county, you can see what a significant event that my department has dealt with the last year. And I'm really proud of the staff and the engineers. We really did have to drop everything we were doing and concentrate on these issues first, and we were able to get all of these constructed without additional funding. We didn't ask for no additional funding. The other thing that is going to be significant that could impact my program next year is of that roughly 3.8, $4 million that we have spent repairing this damage, to date, we've only been reimbursed $500,000. And so although I have put in my this year's budget the authority to spend that money, it's no different than we would handle our personal accounts, and if FEMA doesn't reimburse me in this budget year, I will be unable to spend that money and I will be forced to do the same thing I did last year, which is go back and reduce my maintenance programs and my construction programs. Last year, I talked to you that we were really excited that we had gotten two bridges, H 115 and Y 181 as NEMA grant bridges at a 75-25 share. This allows us to stretch our dollars a lot further. Sadly, as the FEMA event progressed, there were many local counties whose bridges were denied for repair. And when FEMA grants repair of bridges, that's what funds NEMA's hazardous bridge program. So as those bridges were taken out of the program, and we have one bridge that is still under appeal in Lancaster County ourselves, the money for the grant program disappeared. And I cannot, if I start design on these bridges, we lose the grant, which is unfortunate. I have made the decision to wait and see what happens in December. They said they would have a better picture of what their program was then. You can see from the picture of our bridge engineer, who is somewhat of a poser, that the erosion around this structure was dramatic and significant and very dangerous to the public. This is a structure that's in the Waverly area. Y 181, although I have to humbly say as an engineer, I love this little bridge. It's made from limestone cut from Lancaster County Rock Quarry. It was built with WPA funds in the late 1930s. It's on a spread footing, the same as your house would be constructed. I love this little bridge, but it no longer meets our needs. And unfortunately, after the August storms, this is one of the bridges that is now closed to the public because of the dramatic undermining of that footing that you see in this picture. And actually, the footing that you see in this picture is something that a previous engineer must have added on to try to save the bridge, so it really had some other structural things going on, too, that were really interesting. As we go forward, you may have watched in the paper the dramatic discussion at the time of budget. I came forward when I was asked to do zero-based budgeting, which means you ask for what you need, and I did let the commissioners know a month before my budget hearing that if I was to come forward and ask for what I need, I would be coming forward asking for $110 million. Now, since Lancaster County taxpayers have traditionally contributed for the last 10 years, somewhere around $6.2 million, I knew that wasn't a possibility. But I did let the board know that our needs were dramatic and dire, and I did let the board know that I would be coming forward with an ask that was somewhere around 10% of that, because we have to start somewhere. We have to start systematically conquering this problem for our community. The board did not grant the budget I asked for. They did give me an additional $1 million compared to previous year's budgets. So with that additional $1 million, next year, I will be able to pave one stretch of Adams Street from approximately the Stevens Creek Crossing to 148th Street. That will be our only new pavement project next year. Overlays, we are still trying to get some rec road funding from the state so we can stretch our overlay dollars. This may be an area that I will have to reduce pavement overlays on, depending on what we get for FEMA reimbursements. So that you're aware, I do have 20 miles of overlay in the plan right now, but the county is in need of 90 miles of overlay. This is dire because if we don't get that asphalt short up, we could be looking at the same situation that Omaha has looked at and that counties in Iowa have looked at, where they have ground that pavement down and turned it back to gravel. I don't think that's a viable option for Lancaster County. The bridge that we have in the plan for this year is Bridge C 91. C 91 on a 0 to 100 sufficiency scale for bridges is a 27. It's a 27. It's located on Raymond Road, just a little west of First Street. It has well over 1,000 cars a day on it. It has actually been on our 1 and 6 roadway plan since the late 90s. It is also Tiger Beetle Habitat as well as Salt wart Habitat. We've had a number of meetings with the Army Corps of Engineers and with Parks and Wildlife to go forward. The salt wart was, has actually been harvested from this area. I guess it can be put in a freezer and then transplanted in other locations later, so that's kind of exciting. Although I was alarmed to learn that some of the staff at Nebraska Parks and Wildlife had ate salt wart, and so I just was a little shocked. Apparently, it tastes like salty lettuce. There's a number of standby bridges that have been put into the plan. The bridges that I recently closed, we have no funding. We have no source of revenue to fix these bridges sadly. We are looking at the studies for them. They are emergency closures, which means I didn't have hydraulics on them and have hydrology or environmental, we're really going to have to look at those. Many of these bridges were built in the late 1930s or early 1940s, again with that WPA funding, oftentimes for the average cost of Lancaster County of about $1,000. So although they are built in a method that I would never build a bridge on today, I have to humbly say that if their lifespan was 50 years and they lasted 80 years, you know, maybe we need to look at that a little differently. In addition to that, we do plan to do several culverts next year, and I have the permitting in place for North 27th Street. It's very important that I bid North 27th Street, the North 27th Street project, next spring, because if I don't, I will have to look at starting over with all of my environmental permitting, and the environmental permitting for that job did take more than four years. So here, the map is in your packets. Here is the north half of the map, which encompasses all of the proposed improvements at this time. Then if I'm to look forward and to talk about 2018 through 2022, we did move forward last year with a traffic study of the Saltillo Corridor, in particular, the corridor from approximately 33rd to just east of 56th Street. The reason we did that is because on either side of that, the South Beltway connects, and the South Beltway will rebuild the intersections at 14th Street, at 33rd Street, at 70th Street, and at 84th Street. So the safety study for that corridor did, not really a shocker, prove up that that is a very dangerous corridor. We would need a safety, a cost benefit safety ratio of a one to be able to qualify with the state for safety funding. The Saltillo Corridor had nearly a four, nearly a four with the accidents and the things that have happened in that corridor. So the state is very interested in that project. Federal Highways has told us that we need to make sure that that project is not confused or considered part of the South Beltway, and that's very important for the South Beltway's environmental corridor. We are also looking at 68th Street. We are coordinating that with the City of Hickman, who has recently done a study at how they're going to widen 68th Street through town, which is quite a project for them. But we have that last mile and a half into Hickman that has similar issues with very high traffic volumes. In addition to that, in the future, we need to look at that paving of 98th Street. We are bound by the agreement at which we bought the land from the adjacent landowners to grade and pave that road in the same year. In addition to that, there is verbiage in that agreement that says if we don't build the road by 2030, the land reverts back to the original owners. And we paid a lot of money for that land, so that just can't happen. Bridges that I have in the next five-year plan are F 88, that is a bridge located on North 14th Street, just a little bit north of Stonebridge Creek. In addition to- In addition to that, although Lancaster County will not have any expenses with the South Beltway project that we'll have to pay to Department of Roads, we do have a lot of transition areas that we're going to need to look at and probably do some adjacent improvements to or coordinate with the state. And then you may have noticed too that the East Beltway did make the next ten years planning only, which was a bit disappointing. But that being said, prior to it being placed on this plan, Department of Roads had told me that it would not be on the plan. And so, I really want to thank the public for having a lot of involvement there because that really made the difference to getting that on the radar. This is what the next five years look like with road projects that become extraordinarily expensive like Ninety-eight Street if we're to look at those four miles of it along with the grading project. The Saltillo Corridor project is estimated out at just a little under six million dollars. So, it's also a very expensive project. We have Fifty-fourth Street into Hickman that we'll need to pave. That becomes very important because as the South Beltway is constructed, there is a major bridge, a major overpass bridge to be constructed on Sixty-eighth Street. And so, we need to make sure that Hickman continues to have access north to the City of Lincoln with their traffic patterns. And with that, I just want to close in saying there's been a lot of talk in the media lately that I have been punitive to the public and that I am closing bridges as a shenanigan. I will assure you that is something I would never do. I would never do that. I have an A-BET accredited engineering degree. I have a license in engineering to practice in the state of Nebraska. And with that comes a code of ethics. That code of ethics binds me to use all reasonable standards of care for the public. In this case, in the case of bridges, the reasonable standards of care that are set forth are set forth by the Federal Highway Administration and Nebraska Department of Roads. Nebraska Department of Roads and the Federal Highway Administration rate our bridges on a zero to ten scale for a scour. Once we get down to a three, we have to have on file with Department of Roads an emergency plan of action. We have thirty-two bridges that have emergency plan of actions. If they are any less than a three, they're closed. And the criteria set forth by Federal Highways is extraordinarily clear. And there is zero wiggle room on it. It says if the bridge is undermined, if the bridge is undermined, the abutment wall or the footing, the bridge must be closed. The bridge must be closed. Sadly, there's no definite, there's no wiggle room on that. But the same, at the same time, I would tell you that even if there was, I would still close the bridge because we need to protect the safety of the public. The other thing I'll sadly tell you is I think we're going to end up with more than twelve bridges closed. I hope we don't end up like Saunders County with more than twenty closed or like Odo County with nearly thirty closed, but I could see us getting there because we have thirty-two right now with an emergency plan of action. And that means that after any three-inch rainfall event or anytime the creek has flowed full bank to bank for more than four hours, we must go out and inspect that bridge. And if when we do that inspection, we find that the criteria to keep that bridge open are no longer met, I will close the bridge. Are there any questions?
Questions for Pam?
Yeah. I got a couple. On the South Fifty-fourth Street paving, you said that was needed because of a major overpass on Sixty-eighth. Is that like south of Saltillo and north of Bennett?
It's like, so the South Beltway, this would be south of the South Beltway. And then it would be the last mi, two miles that come into the south end of Hickman. So, we graded that two sections.
No, where's that overpass? Is that south of Saltillo? Is that going to be south?
It's south of Saltillo, correct. It's in between Saltillo and Hickman.
So, couldn't, couldn't you travel north on Sixty-eight to Roca Road and then go over to Fifty-fourth and not pave Fifty-fourth south from Roca Road?
So, what I was really looking at as we work on the South Beltway is that there's some direct paved route into Hickman. That was the goal. When I did meet with the Hickman community, and I'll just say God bless them, they asked that I pave Fifty-fourth Street, that I add the shoulders to Sixty-eighth Street, and that I pave the three miles of Eighty-second Street between Saltillo and Roca Road. So, they didn't ask for much. Like I said, God bless them. But, and I appreciate the discussion with them. You know, when I'm looking at that Eighty-second Street corridor, I know that there's a lot of construction to go on in that area too for the South Beltway as well as Sixty-eight. So, it kind of makes sense to pick Fifty-fourth Street as the corridor into Hickman so that they have one direct paved route as their construction for the South Beltway occurs. And that piece of road, the traffic counts on it do warrant pavement. So.
Any other questions?
I'll go after her.
I was just curious, you referred to transition areas when you talked about the south and east Beltway. What's considered a transition area?
Well, we really look at that three-mile, well, I guess there's two, I really look at that three-mile buffer as the transition area between the city and the county. As far as transition areas for the east and the south Beltways, those are the areas where, like Eighty-second Street. So, we know that Eighty-second Street also meets the warrants to be paved, although we don't have the funding to do it. I want to make sure that we coordinate those endpoints. So, the end of the, the end of Eighty-second Street with our future Eighty-second Street pavement project, so they work. And it seems like an easy thing, but it's not necessarily an easy thing when you're looking at construction transitions between pavement and gravel and grading projects that maybe needed to be done but haven't been done yet. There's a lot of pieces and parts.
And I assume that's an evolving process as we get closer to the...
Well, I mean, it's an involved process now. I or members of my staff attend about eight hours of coordination meetings every month on the South Beltway at Department of Roads. And I see that probably continuing through the next two or three years.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Good. On your proposed twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-two plan, is that kind of a wish list then? And if so, and if, is there a weighted? Do you rate them as far as which ones you would prefer to do first if you can do that?
Is it a wish list? I guess, may, maybe if you're looking at the crystal ball. I'm going to say it's more solid than it has been in the past. In the past, my predecessor just kind of put everything on the two through six list and it really wasn't. So, what you're seeing here is bound by the future dollars that I believe I'll have, which is the dollars I have now, just, you know, times five, divided up. As far as priority, looking at it, I'm going to have to look at what is, I mean, there's a lot of things that go into that. Ninety-eight Street, we haven't done the design of the last mile. It's done in concept only. It needs a grading plan. It will need environmental work, as will Saltillo. And, you know, Saltillo is, because it's a Nebraska, Department of Roads has agreed to support us. You know, if I'm to enter into the agreement with them at a ninety-ten split, ten Lancaster County, ninety Department of Roads, you know, I have to follow their procedures and protocol. That will probably take two to three years at least. They don't have funding available until the year twenty twenty. I know that now. So, you know, that means that I'll probably go and look at the other pieces first. Also, long-term, it may be that we look at bridges first to get those back open. I think it's important to the traveling public. And we may have to look at bridges differently than we have in the past. We will prob, with the bridges, we will most likely concentrate on the structures that have the highest traffic counts first. And so, of the bridges I've closed, we do have a few. In particular, I had, I have three up in the northeastern quadrant of the county that had less than fifteen cars a day on them. And in the case of two of those bridges, they are longer than eighty feet, which means they're million-dollar bridges. I don't know if Lancaster County can ever justify paying a million dollars for a bridge that has fifteen cars a day. Now, as I say that, I'll caveat that in your plan, there's a culvert that has six cars a day. And you may say, Pam, why are you going to even consider building a culvert with six cars a day? And that's because it is a county road that is the only access to the city of Denton-Swellfield. And that bridge is bad. So, we're going to look at that. But holistically, we look at the needs of the public. We look at traffic counts as well as other things. If we're to look at what does Lancaster County need for new pavement, we need about twenty-three miles of new pavement. What do we have the funding for or do I see us having the funding for in the future given what we have now? That's what I've put on your map.
If you're looking at abandoning a bridge like that, does it make any sense to then take the land that leads up to that bridge and sell it off or do something, you know, to create revenue that way?
You know, it's interesting. The only people that the adjacent land would be worth anything to because oftentimes on those very small, small traffic count bridges, we're looking at right-of-way that's sixty-six feet wide. It's not technically right-of-way even. It's easement, statutory easement. So, technically, the landowner's already owned to the center line. So, it's, it wouldn't really be a revenue generating source sadly. But I appreciate the thought.
Ken?
I know we're here for conformity to the comprehensive plan, but I think Mike also said that we could make comments towards the county commissioners. And I'm, I want to support your need for a larger budget. And I'm going to use South Sixty-eighth Street as an example because I'm most familiar with that and I'll try to keep this short. Had to write it down so I could keep it all straight. On your, on page seven of the staff report, we have a twenty thirteen carryover project on South Sixty-eighth Street. It shows the trips per day of about fifty-two hundred and fifty max at that time. The comprehensive plan says that when it hits six thousand, it could qualify for divided four lane, which I think would be a little overkill there. But I'm assuming those trips per day are twenty thirteen data? What it was back then?
I believe it is twenty thirteen data, but I would have to confirm that.
Okay. I talked to a Hickman City Council member and he told me since twenty thirteen, they've added a hundred and fifty, approximately a hundred and fifty single-family residences in Hickman. They're currently adding a hundred and thirty more lots. And Firth has an eighty to ninety lot development, which is just south of Hickman. Currently, Sixty-eighth is a narrow two-lane road from Roca Road down to Norris School. It has almost no shoulder in places, which you're obviously aware of. Carries numerous school buses, a number of young inexperienced drivers, which not a lot of roads encounter that, along with the regular traffic. Given the twenty thirteen trips per day and the new residents planned and the ones built out, utilizing Sixty-eighth Street as their main road to Lincoln, I would think that would be nearing that six thousand trips per day if we haven't bypassed it. And so, I just want to get that, I think I talked to Dave and he thought that would be appropriate to put that in to the record today that we need to. And I'm sure there are other roads in Lancaster County that are beyond their triggering numbers. So, I don't know. I don't have an answer and we won't get an answer today because that's not what we're here for, but I just wanted to get that in the conversation.
Yeah, thanks for that comment.
Any other comments or questions? Thanks, Pam.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here wishing to testify in support of this item? Is there anyone here wishing to testify in opposition to this item? Do we have any other questions for anyone? I would entertain a motion.
Move conformance with the comprehensive plan?
Second. Thank you.
I'd just like to congratulate you on the public outreach process. I'm sure that the affected drivers or residents appreciated the opportunity to make their voices heard. So, thanks for taking the time.
Thank you.
I just want to say that our job here today obviously is to find that it's conforming with the comprehensive plan. And just like the sidewalk issue that I complained about for five years straight, I think at some point when you desperately underfund something, I think it is not in conformance with the spirit of the comprehensive plan. And we are in desperate need of additional funding to get the county infrastructure where it needs to be. And while I, you know, I feel constrained and have to make that comprehensive plan conformance finding, I think the county needs to take a real hard look at the significant underfunding that we were giving to our infrastructure that, you know, the people two generations before us were willing to support and build out and make a great county. And we haven't been willing in this generation or two to support what was already built for us and it's crumbling and we need to do something about it.
Others?
Yeah, we obviously have some needs. I agree with Janelle that, you know, your position, your job is very tough when you only have so many dollars to work with and we really need to look, we are coming close to maybe being out of conformance with some things and we need to address that.
Anyone else?
I just echo the sentiments of my commissioners and I thank Pam for doing a good job of the limited funds that she has and also for the outreach. That's phenomenal. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I'm obviously going to support this. Compliments to Pam for research and Mike as well. This is depreciation of assets and the fact is, is that we have more depreciation than we are supporting. And in the long run, that depreciation is catching up and getting ahead of us. And if we can't, you know, stop this, then we'll just continue to get further and further behind. Jerry, please call the vote.
Okay, this is for finding of conformance for comprehensive plan, conformance number one six zero zero eight. Core?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Lust?
Yes.
Sunderman?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Hove?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
The next item was deferred, so at this time, anyone wishing to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so. We're adjourned.